All right. I call the order of regular meeting of the city of Dunsmere to be postponed until 18, 2023 at 6:02 PM. We will stand for the flag salute. We ask that after the flag salute, we'll stay standing for a memorial tribute given by Councilmember.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for those of you who don't know about Allmark, that is on Saturday. You've been very active in this community for a long time volunteering in front of the park, giving the group apps, a lot of other community events. We have also a planning commission for citizens as well. So I just had everyone.
Please throw this stuff, you don't miss a beat.
All right, then move into roll call.
Councilmember Kaisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan? Councilmember Clairena?
Yes.
Councilmember and Mayor Lukeyezi.
Good, thank you. We have a special request by city staff today to move item 11B, short-term rentals versus annual review of short-term rental registrations after regulations in place. Our contract planner, city planner, we said Tinsman is on the Zoom call. And we have requested to move that up in the central. So if it's okay with the council, I'd like to move item 11B to be the item that we take next. Is that okay? We will return, we will return to general public comment after the 11B item is moved up in the agenda.
No objection.
No objections? All right, thank you. So we'll move into item 11B first today before going to general public comment. There will be public comment for this item specifically during the item. We will begin with a staff report from Rico Tinsman.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, so really, this is just an informational item. I think back in April, the council requested that the planning commission take a look at the status of short-term rentals one year into the new regulations. And we did, the planning commission did. And in doing so, we sort of updated the data from when we first looked at this issue back in October 2020. When we looked at it in 2020, we didn't yet have the census data available. So looking at that and sort of seeing how, you know, sort of the prior analysis was impacted by the new numbers. And basically what we found is that there's more people than we had thought, fewer homes than we thought, and a higher, lower vacancy rate than we thought, which all implies greater housing stress. So with that said, we also, or the planning commission also looked at a sort of the purchase dates on these properties. Because, you know, I, you know, as I'm sure the mayor can attest, there's regular calls to the planning departments for inquiring about short-term rentals. And I know other city staff get those calls as well. So there's, you know, there's just, there's been growing interest in the short-term rental market for investors. So we looked at that and basically what we found was that, you know, in the time of easy money, which we have departed from, you could really see a ramping up of purchases specifically as short-term rentals. Since the Fed started increasing the interest rates, we have seen that number plummet. So, you know, we're still getting short-term rentals that are being registered with the city. You know, where some of the situations are not, you know, at least one of them is not a speculative thing. But we are taking a look at this and just sort of, so basically the planning commission decided to take six months, sort of see where we're at in six months and see how the trends, if they've changed, and whether we need to do something. One of the interesting things that came out of this was sort of this discussion about, as you know, we followed, you know, a lot of this evolution of the short-term rental regulations came from Truckee's latest iteration of the short-term rental regulations. I think started initially in Big Bear Lake. But Truckee has since implemented a cap. And I've spoken with their planning staff about how they set that number. Because that, one of the big concerns has been whether that cap, should the city eventually set one, whether it'd be arbitrary. And just to sort of provide perspective, the cap that Truckee implemented was the existing number of short-term rentals. They just stopped it from growing any further and implemented a waitlist. So as units fall off, people can get on, you know, start, I mean, you know, just anyway, you know how it works. And then the other thing that we found was that they had implemented a one-year waitlist. So basically, it wasn't really even a waitlist. It was really, you had to own your property for a full year before you could register as a short-term rental. Something that the planning commission had discussed back in October of 2020. That was eventually, the idea was poo-pooed, simply because we tend to like to let the larger jurisdictions with more money fight the lawsuits first. And in this case, Truckee has plenty of very wealthy property owners there that concernly test that. And so far, it has not been challenged. So those are a couple of things that we will be looking at when this goes back to the planning commission in November. Any questions?
Thank you, guys. Rico, in the broader scheme of things, we have a person with property to rent and they have a choice between renting to somebody for a year and renting Airbnb. How does the economics of that come down? Are the people that decide that they're going to Airbnb in Dunsmere end up making more money than if they had been renting to people who live there?
So I can't tell you what the current market is. I think that obviously depends upon the short-term rental. But I think, I, I know what you're saying. Yes, I think the answer is likely yes. But I know, I was watching a documentary on short-term rentals or some sort of fluff on short-term rentals. I don't know what it was. But basically, the investors were saying, you know, the real estate investors were saying that was the best thing going since, you know, sliced bread. So I think there's been a lot of people that have been jumping in the market because when you look at it, it can make a lot of money. The question I've always had is whether we're going to continue seeing this. At some point, you know, you can build, the way I, the analogy is you can build a 10,000 unit, or 10,000-room hotel. Are you going to book all the rooms? Is it going to be worth your while? So eventually, we have enough short-term rentals in this community. There's only so many people that we're going to need to accommodate on a nightly basis. So at some point, you know, we don't know whether that, the market's going to just hit, get saturated and the market's going to correct itself. Or whether we really need to put in a cap. So one of the things we're going to be looking at, you know, because of the potential that it could, you know, just, you know, the, the market could motivate people to rent purely short-term rather than long-term. One of the things we're going to look at is simply, you know, looking at our vacancy rate and try to get a better idea of how many of these, what percentage of our vacancy rate is in short-term rentals. So something we haven't looked at yet.
All right, Councilmember Kaisler?
Rico, how many of these Airbnbs do we have in Dunsmere?
We currently have 72. Well, as of the time I wrote the staff report, we had 72. So we may have one more. There's a couple, a couple more that are in progress, but.
Page 70 of the packet, Rico provided a breakdown of the number of units and then by zone. And then he also worked out what unit types as well.
All right. Okay, cool.
I believe that 72 number includes the rooms that are in the Mossbray Hotel.
Okay.
It doesn't, it does not include the Mossbray Hotel. So that was one of the things. When we first looked at these numbers, and I apologize for the confusion. When we first looked at this in October 2020, we had, you know, a very similar number, right? Like, like 71. But that number included the Mossbray Hotel and the Dunsmere Hotel, which was like 19 units. Or no, 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 I think it was like 20, 20-something units. So when we pulled those numbers out, because we said, really, these are boutique hotel rooms. So pulled those numbers out, you, you can see in the table, 1.2 of the planning commission staff report, you know, you can see no short-term rentals in the Central Commercial Historic District. So, but what we found is, once we pulled those numbers out, the numbers now are basically the same, which means that the numbers elsewhere in the community have risen by the number that was in the Historic District. Meaning we've got another 101 units out there.
All right, Councilmember Bryan?
I just wanted to provide some anecdotal insight to the question. Ask person clarification on the C2 units, others than houses or not. I can start with that one. Do you go, is that commercial buildings or just a commercial zoning? To give us a sense of what those 20 are.
You know, to be perfectly honest, the, the best person to ask, I don't know. But the very best person to ask that question of is there in the room with you.
So Rico, if you're taking that information from my spreadsheet that I gave you, then that is a zoning.
I think the question that Councilmember Bryan has is within the C2 zone, what kind of housing types are they primarily at? Single-family apartments?
Yeah, single-family or duplex.
Okay, cool. And then as to the economics, since I'm in this industry and kind of have to deal with this a bit, and I've seen actual numbers, both in Dunsmere and elsewhere. We're in a bit of an Airbnb short-term rental bubble, where it was the coolest idea back when prices were lower. Money was cheap. You buy a place in Dunsmere for $135,000 in 2017, turn it into a short-term rental. You make money hand over fist. It's unregulated. There's no other Airbnb, so you get all the attention. What I typically observe, and you hear a lot of random numbers thrown out there, is Airbnb has staggering highs when it's busy, as far as the monthly rate. So like, one house could bring in, say that house would rent for fair market value would be, say, 1,400, 1,500 for a small, you know, pre-2 in Dunsmere. You will see that house rent for probably over 4,000 in peak, peak season. But you're also going to see staggering lows, where like, they bring in like $300 in a month. So typically, I've observed a trend where they bring in gross about 25% more currently on the actuals I've seen, to give it a sense. So it is more, but there's so many costs involved and the competition's starting to be very existent, is my observation. Because if you don't have a professionally managed, luxurious, very up-kept Airbnb, people aren't going to stay with you as much. It drives the price down and becomes less lucrative. We already have, I would remind everyone, in our ordinance, a limitation on investors coming in and buying up Airbnbs in that they can only have up to two per owner. And I, I'm sure we may have a couple that have two. But for the most part, it's not so much that you make more money than long-term. It's you can make the same as long-term, but you get your one weekend a month and you can come up. Or you come up in the winter a lot or the off-season, is my observation. But I thought I'd share that since I'm in the field.
My question, Rico, in terms of the short-term rental analysis, how much analysis is going into the housing element update on this issue?
That's a great question. I honestly, I would look to you because we are using the same consultant that Wyrica used. So is this an issue in Wyrica? And was it reviewed in the housing element there?
No, Wyrica has only four total or three total short-term rentals. You don't really go to Wyrica for vacation. You go to Wyrica for a court day. The other thing too is Wyrica has larger-scale hotels that we find, actually, a lot of them are housing homeless people right now under voucher system. So yeah, it was not identified as an issue, so we did not do an analysis on short-term rentals.
Wendy, you were recording that when she said that.
I'll, I'll say that. I usually tell people, I mean, I think we just talked about that with high school students, that most people don't go to Wyrica for vacation.
Yeah. So, so I will, I will leave Wyrica alone. But I will bring it up with our consultants and mention that we have some of this analysis if they'd like to incorporate it into the housing element.
I know that they're creating Mount Chastos, and I believe Mount Chastos just put out their first draft for their housing element. So I would assume there's probably some kind of narrative or analysis within Mount Chastos. It's just a completely different housing market in South County than it is in North County, just based off of the conversations I've had with Michelle and Vanessa at Plan West. But I'm just curious, that might be something that we put into the housing element to have a little bit more holistic guidance on how much of an issue it is or can be. Yeah, so I'll wait for a discussion before I share the rest of my thoughts. But Councilmember Bryan?
I just had a request for when this comes back to either planning commission or, and/or city council. I'd love to know our total number of short-term units, not just these short-term rentals. Like, we have hotel units, they're fluctuating. But I'd like to know the overall number because banning it makes a lot more sense if we have empty hotel rooms, you know, capping it than if we don't. Because we have to sustain the ability of people to come and stay here too, you know, come to our events, eat in our restaurants, et cetera. But, so I just love that number as a reference point, you know? What percentage is the Airbnb or short-term rentals of the total hospitality rooms?
I like that. That's a good, that's a good stat to have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we open for public comment?
No, never.
Seeing none, we'll open public comment. So if you are on Zoom, you may go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. Otherwise, if anyone in the audience tonight here with us in person, you may approach the podium and you will have three minutes to comment on short-term rentals. No one? Okay, I will close the public comment period. This is an information-only item, I believe. Rico, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so in terms of actions by council, there's nothing being requested of us. That doesn't mean that if you have an interest in this or want to see additional information, you can state that now. But we'll start with Councilmember.
I just think that with everything we've kind of talked about here, the smart thing we should do, well, first of all, exactly, we're getting so much revenue from this right now and critical time for our budget. Means that we probably would be wanting to hesitate on putting a cap on it now. But if we do see that the direction is maybe going away from the excitement, maybe the idea of having a requirement that you can't transition to that for over a year, give us time to wait and see and catch up on the trim. But, you know, I hope we get a hold of it. But again, without, we don't want to touch the budget aspect as much as.
Any other discussion?
I just point out that it is staggering to see, I don't know if anyone is looking at this, the chart for 2023, even 22 from 21, it goes way down. It, it looks like it's just fallen off a cliff as far as new. And I don't know if that's because some are starting to leave. In fact, I have first-hand knowledge of houses that have come on the market that were bought to be Airbnbs. They decided it wasn't working out and left. And you'll find the investors will do that if they don't have their returns. The second homers won't. They're just trying to offset it.
I think one of the other things, Rico, for, for future consideration, I think I've been pretty strongly in favor of placing a cap on a number of units. I am still hearing from a number of our business owners that they're having a difficulty getting people, especially within like retailer food service, which tends to be a lower income profession. They're having difficulty getting housing in the city still. And it is still an item that people point to, you know, potentially short-term rentals. But there, there's definitely a bigger conversation around the vacancy rate. And I really hope that as you go through the housing element, that's, I think that's flushed out a little bit more. Because I'm not, I'm not as familiar with what options are available for California in relation to stimulating people to occupy those vacant units. There's a couple of other states I've worked in that applies a tax to vacant units that, you know, again, tries to stimulate people to fill them. But I think that's something I'd like to see going forward in the future. The other thing too is it would be interesting to know this, this spatial divide of where these units are. I think in terms of supporting the community, I think it's going to be important to be smart about the location of short-term rentals and not necessarily taking up valuable neighborhood space around schools that may be better served for long-term residents. You may be using those services and then encouraging the short-term rentals to focus more in the commercial districts and the historic districts to kind of get those people in the downtown more. I think there's, I, I think it's good. I mean, I'm still very cautious and I'd like to see a, a cap. Even today, I was kind of hoping that planning commission would want to put a cap on. But that's my position, but those are my thoughts on that.
I share the item.
One thing I'd like to see where the next time this comes to us for any action, if possible, is I'm sure through the registration process, we have contact information for the owners. I'd love to see some kind of survey go out to them and get some of their information. Stuff like, how often do they come up? How often do they use the place? How many Airbnb do they own? It can be a volatile survey, but I think it could be valuable to get some additional information from them.
These are part of the challenge in general, is that some people just don't want to deal with some bad tenants that come in and destroy everything and over time. These are the driving forces behind it where you can.
Well, the Tenant Protection Act of 2019 makes it very difficult for one to give a tenant notice if you want to use the house again, yourself or like say, part-time or use it, fix it up. So short-term does allow for a lot of flexibility when it comes to access. That could be one, one factor. I don't think it's a major factor in my observation here. Most of the motivation, I mean, I do think you do have some people that thought it was just about investing. But the numbers aren't that good because it costs a lot of money to have a competitive Airbnb. I mean, to make the big money, you have to have cleaners coming in pretty much four times a week as you turn out, back, back and forth. You have to keep supplies up. You have to be competitive. You have to be the one that everyone wants to book, you know, at that higher price. So the, the cost to manage that typically run about 25% if you have it professionally managed. So that almost erodes your entire, you know, profit. So I, I look at this through the lens of, as I was just saying, generally, our problem with the vacancy. And I view Airbnb or short-term rentals as a, a solution, maybe not our favorite solution, but at least a solution to the vacancy. So I look at all the vacant houses, but it was a 26-point-something percent?
Yeah, it's pretty high.
Yeah, a quarter of our.
30% now.
Oh, 30%?
Yeah, it was 26.
So it's, it's actually, so it's 26.9% right now? The, or it's gone down to 25.9. I don't remember exactly which number it is. But it had been at 30% in the 2010, at the 2010 census. The, and that's the, you know, if you look at 2000, the vacancy rate in this community was like 25%. So the number has sort of stayed around this rate for, you know, a very long time. And that's sort of been the, the discussion that we've had is how many of these, you know, historically are just, you know, we've got a strong second homeownership in this community. Right? We've got a lot of folks that come up here to fish, ski, whatever. It's a beautiful place to be. So how many of these people have just found an opportunity to make a little bit of money on their second homes that they already have versus how many people are actually buying up our neighborhoods to make money? So I think what the city has done so far is really to put this, these measures in place to try to throttle back some of the speculative buying. As, you know, Councilmember Bryan said, the, you know, we've already got this, this limit on two, with ownership of two within the residential districts. And that, you know, I think has helped absolutely. And honestly, when we look at a cap, I, I'm, would love to have that conversation, Julia, or Madam Mayor. Let's, let's talk, because I would, frankly, this is where I fail. I don't know what that number is, what that, you know, it's one of the reasons I want to look at what, what percentage of our, our vacancy rate are in short-term rentals, right? Like, you know, what is our true vacancy rate? And, and honestly, is that really our true vacancy rate? But, you know, so there's, because I don't necessarily even trust our unit numbers that we have. So, so I feel, for, for me, I'm uncomfortable because I don't work in arbitraries, right? Like, I like solids. So that's what I always try to give you for recommendations that are based on known things. So when, when it comes to crystal ball stuff, I'm really tough with that. So that's why, you know, I like Truckee's approach. They capped it at what they had, you know? And, and I'll tell you, they had 1,200 short-term rentals, right? That is a significant number. So, you know, if we hit that, sort of that equivalent number, I'll just, you know, so that number was 9.85% of their total housing stock. If we were to do the equivalent in Dunsmere, based on the numbers that we, you know, per the state's records of what we have for housing units, that would be 100 units, right? And, and my gut tells me, yeah, that seems reasonable, but I don't know, right? One thing I don't like doing is thinking about potentially adversely impacting, you know, one thing I never want to do is adversely impact anyone, right? It's just what I really strive to do is, is make sure that I better everything I touch. So the last thing I want to do is, you know, recommend something to you that could adversely impact the community or an individual. So anyway, so I just take this very seriously. So if you have experience with sort of setting these numbers and caps, love to discuss it because, you know, I frankly need some guidance. And I don't know that we're going to get it from planless partners on what those numbers are. Happy to have that discussion with them. But, you know, I just don't know what that number is, so.
Yeah, I think, I think it just gets back to the vacancy rate. I think it's maybe, I think, and we've kind of had this roundabout conversation a couple of times on this item, where I think we're trying to get to the root of the vacancy rate issue and not maybe necessarily just short-term rentals. Because I mean, to put it in perspective, Wyrica's vacancy rate is 1.2%. So that's their issue, is they don't have enough units for anything. So, yeah, it's just, it's interesting. I think it's almost easier if your vacancy rate is low, because the solutions are a little bit more apparent. But if, when we start getting into our situation with a larger vacancy rate, why? Yeah, so I think, yeah, I, I think I'm going to kind of go to Councilmember Bryan. But my final thoughts are, I think it would be good to share this with Vanessa and Michelle at Plan West. And I think this is a conversation, I think that can evolve into the housing element first draft and discussion. So I would appreciate after this meeting, Wendy, working with Rico to share the recording with them. I think it's just good information because each city is just going through different issues. And it's just going to take council, you know, for the short-term rental discussion, my experience is that the council sets the tone in terms of what the balance is. You know, are we going to focus on economic development and tax reg regeneration? Do we want longer-term residents? But again, you know, we bring up the good point of second homeowners and just having to take it. My, my neighbor is a second homeowner. He does not, they do not do short-term rental, but they only come up at the house sometimes a year. So again, it just brings into a bigger polar conversation.
Yeah, I was just, I could have the opportunity to finish the thoughts I was on before. I view it through vacancy, and I just calculated the numbers based on that percentage. We should have upwards of 283 vacant units. And again, we still need to study this number and get it more accurate. But I am adamantly against any cap. I think other solutions would be really interested in, I'm interested in exploring, until we have a better understanding of that vacancy. Because that seems to me like it's the fundamental problem with available housing. So I, I view Airbnb as a, as a possible solution to a house sitting empty all but one weekend a year, which I, I know, I've seen. So then you get, you know, short-term rentals next best, because at least it's contributing to the community. They're coming here, they're spending money, they're falling in love with the town, investing in it later on with their lives, bringing their families here. You know, it, it could go that way. I also think we need it in the context, you know, if we put the economic development lens on, we need a certain number of beds available in the hospitality industry in this town. If that's sufficiently met by the hotels, then I think a cap maybe is justified. But until we have good data on that, I'm very much against the, you know, even looking into that until we kind of have those. even looking into that until we kind of have those flushed out. I love the idea of geographic breakdown and maybe some guidance there. I'd be interested in exploring that further. Because there's some areas that just by the nature of them should be accessible if someone wants to do that. It, it seems to me at least, and other areas that seem less suited.
Just for the clarity of everyone involved in the conversation and everyone listening, you define vacant unit as it is defined when generating the support.
Do you want to take it, Rico?
I'm sorry. Was the question what defines a vacant unit?
Yes.
My understanding is it's basically not permanently inhabited, so it's not the permanent residence of the individual.
My question, ma'am, would be, does this drive us towards, as a council, making this a major initiative? To kind of solve this over time and work it? I mean, right now you've been talking about all the vacancies, but those are finally real with it. Do you have one?
I think it's, it's going into the housing element update. So they'll be looking at this as one of the issues. So like I said, one of the issues that came out of Waireka's housing element update is the fact that we only have 1.2% vacancy. Typically, you want to like sit around 10%, 10, 12, because that means that you have enough units open for people to be moving within your community. You know, people moving up to larger units because they have families or people moving down because they're empty nesters. But then it also has enough housing units for people to be moving in and then moving out of the community and just being able to facilitate that kind of housing unit mobility piece and looking at the diversity of the units. So I mean, I, i- if it is a big issue, I mean, it's something that will be a goal within the housing element of ensuring that we have a good mixture of unit types. Like I said, I haven't looked at what Mount Chaska's draft housing element looks like in terms of a discussion on short-term rentals, but I would assume it's going to be a similar conversation. If not, probably, it's probably a worse issue for them up there than it is for us here. I would just speculate based off of just experience. But it is a topic that impacts the housing element and so should probably be some kind of discussion. And, and like I said, they could come in and say, you know what, it's not an issue. And it could just be a perceived end of their whole issue. We also help develop a lot of housing needs or like I said, looking at the vacancy rate and what all is included in that. Any other discussion?
I've just, Rico, you, you said they capped, that Truckee capped it about 1,200 people, right?
1,200 units, yeah. That was, it was 9.85% of their housing stock. So the equivalent for Dunsmere would be 100 units.
How many people live in Truckee?
I, I don't know what their regular vacancy rate is, but I'm guessing it's very similar or potentially higher than ours.
Yeah, I think they have like five.
Truckee is 17,168 in the American Community Survey projections for 2021. So that's 17,000.
And there's 13,000 housing units in Truckee. So it's approximately 9% of their housing units are short-term rentals.
9%?
9% and ours is about 5.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Rico.
Pleasure.
I appreciate your work on this.
Look forward to bringing it back to you all.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, thank you, Rico, and we will return back to our agenda for today. So just to recap again, for those who came in a little bit later today, after the roll call, so item two, there was a request by city staff to move item 11B, which we just finished discussion, to item number three. And so now we will return to the regularly scheduled meeting and go into general public comment. This is the time for members of the public to make comments on items that are not on the agenda or items that are on our consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight is just the check register for April 29th through May 12th of 2023. So if you would like to approach the podium and make a comment on an item not on the agenda or if you would like to make a comment on the check register, please approach the podium. Those on Zoom may raise their hand in the reaction cabin. You may also have three minutes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, public. I came armed tonight with two documents. One is the 2123 budget, which I thought was an excellent piece of work for the city of Dunsmere. That's coming up later in the agenda. I also came armed with the City of Dunsmere 2020 community vision and priorities. Having sat and listened to the last 35 minutes of discussion around housing, to me, all it does is emphasize the initiative that the mayor started in 2020, where the City of Dunsmere, according to the draft, is developing a new vision for the future of the community and the priorities for city service. The vision and priorities will help the city council make decisions on budget and on staff allocations. The process for creating the vision and the priority list will include public engagement and including surveying, public focus groups and open public meetings. The first stage of public engagement will include a survey that will be sent through the utility billing process, hosted on the city's website, promoted through the city's social media and available in hard copy at City Hall in the public library. The survey questions will ask for input on how the community sees the city in the future and what defines Dunsmere apart from other cities. The second stage will include public focus groups evaluating a draft vision, initial list of priorities. Result of the survey will be synthesized into a draft vision statement for members of the public to discuss. Initial list of priorities will include results from the survey and encourage participants to offer additional priorities not listed in the survey. The focus group will be an open meeting, but invitations will be directly sent to the organizations and businesses invested in the community. Finally, the draft vision from the survey and focus groups will be presented to both the planning commission and the city council. For final comments and approval, both meetings will be advertised and open to the public under the Brown Act regulations. And as you know, Madam Mayor, this is really an essential first step. Until the budget and the visioning and the forward-looking priorities are developed and meshed for our community, it's just transactional piece by piece. The housing discussion, how many units do you count for the travelers? How many units do you count for the Dunsmere Hotel? How many units do you count for the abandoned annex building? And what should be done in whole to meet the needs of low-income residents and struggling businesses? I urge you to get back to vision and planning. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other public comments on items that are not on the agenda or are on the consent agenda, which is our check register? Seeing none, we'll close general public comment, move on to item number five, which, which is council and staff comments. There's been a request by Councilmember Claire to go first.
Well, not quite as we've been announced since we did the moment sensor call first. I just have a couple of quick ones here. First off, we just had a chamber of commerce mixer at the Denver Bury Works, well attended by members of the local business community. There were a couple presenters. First off was Vive going over the downtown Wi-Fi project and their, what they were doing for that and kind of a little bit of the timeline. They're working on trying to get the first iteration of a couple of these systems up for some of the events such as railroad days, since the final system won't be installed for, by that time. Secondly, was someone from COS. They're trying to get some interns placed, local nonprofits and local businesses. If you're running a local nonprofit and are interested in that, please reach out to the chamber. And then finally was Cal Fish and Wildlife speaking about the public works relocation. Well, the reason we are having to relocate the public works building, which is the large project down at Union Pacific Railroad, which the council is very familiar with. And then the other item I wanted to touch on tonight is that there's, while fuel moisture in the woods are still pretty low, we are starting to get a little bit towards fire season and the city has put a moratorium on outdoor burning.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Claire? Seeing none, we'll move back over to city staff and start the same thing.
I got my own microphone now, thanks to Blake and Wendy. So a couple, a couple of things, kind of primary focus is last week, their Caltrans and their project and our water line on the bridge. They replaced the temporary line. Basically, we, oh, I think we've been working on this for probably, I don't know, since last week sometime, there's been some challenges that their engineering is not matching what, what we think it should. And so we're having a back and forth about that. I think we have another onsite meeting again next week. Actually, I have probably two onsite meetings next week. One with our engineer and one with, with the group. But it's, that's been proved to be a bit of a challenge. So we'll see it, you start seeing, and on top of that, there's, they're starting to do the survey work and shortly they will be installing all of their scaffolding and work, work platforms and everything for the bridge. So there'll be some temporary closures down in Talendali, some temporary closure for the road and for the trail. But once that is up, then they will reopen with full protections in place to ensure safety. And so that's most of what I've been dealing with this week. Unified Command is back in town. They, for the Union Pacific project, met with Unified Command yesterday. EPA, Fish and Wildlife and the Water Board and then Union Pacific and then their, their primary contractor Envirocon. And so they're looking to begin, right now they're in the process of moving power lines. And hopefully, well, Monday, they're going to start, start moving equipment in. And then the 29th will be demolition and then they'll, June 1st, I believe they'll start dry excavation. And so there are going to be a lot of traffic and a lot of, a lot of trucks. And that is going to continue until they are done. And so right now it's looking at potentially 1,700 feet of shoreline. Cal Fish and Wildlife is, will be on the next agenda for June 1st to provide a update for that.
Would it be possible to put together a short video that you go out on social media, letting people be aware of all the work that's being done by UP and all the traffic that's in there?
Are you the star? Are you going to be the star?
No, I was thinking you.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm okay. We might be able to work something out.
I just think that, you know, there's going to be a lot of that going on and I think our ability to get the work out right now on our newspaper is really hindered. So if there's some way to do it.
Yeah, and, yeah, and she, she was at the, was there and we did have a lot of comments. I did, yeah, provided a bunch of additional comments that, Cal Fish and Wildlife hadn't been here through the snow, so there's been a lot of shifts and changes in the, in the plan in the last couple of months. So it's good to see them back onsite and, and working through that. So, but if there's ever any questions or anything going on, I'm going to work on them specifically for a traffic plan related to the weekend of railroad days. And then, so they could potentially, they're going to try to potentially limit late, that, later in the week, that week to limit outbound traffic and it'd just be traffic to the South Yard. So, but if there's anything specific that we need to do or I need to address with traffic or, you know, anything like that, just please reach out to me, let me know. I got them all on my phone so I can contact them at any time we need.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Claire? Seeing none, we'll move over to side markets.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me. So the City of Dunsmere is contracted for 5,280 hours of patrol time for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. As of this date, 4,813 hours have been completed. 83% of the fiscal year has gone by. 91% of the contracted hours have been completed. For the month of April, the sheriff's office provided 392 hours of service for the City of Dunsmere. We had 217 calls for service. That's up slightly from last year at 197. We took 20 cases, up five from last year. The deputies were really busy last month. I'd asked for more traffic stops and by golly, I got them. They did 48 traffic stops last month compared to 13 from the year before. I did ask that they use discretion and issue warnings as opposed to fines. It's optimism thought to be reasonable. So that being said, seven citations were issued last month, four of which were for traffic violations. So that's one in 12 out of citations. I think we're still pretty good on the, the warnings as opposed to the citations. One parking ticket and two arrest warrants were cited out. We had eight misdemeanor arrests and one felony arrest. One assault. 13 disturbing the peace calls. 18, excuse me, 17 school checks. And again, the 48 traffic stops, they really wanted the, me to slam that home. I've never heard of that in the city of Dunsmere. I sat there and looked through them, are you kidding me? Is the computer messing with me? But one notable incident in April, it was, happened on April 6th off of Oak Street. A female reported an adult male had attacked her vehicle, found in damage. It sounds like he put their car on a stick. A local subject was identified and the case is pending in this guy in DA's office. And we did have a nude male last month roaming the streets of Dunsmere that wound up being a 16-year-old juvenile. He had tried magic mushrooms. Did not work out for him. He was released to his mom. She didn't seem too proud. She was not very proud of him, but, but nobody was injured. And I, I think he has better ideas to what psychedelics can do.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilmember Claire?
What a way to end it, but right on.
Maybe use that in your, your shop.
Yeah.
This could be you walking down Dunsmere naked. Okay, it's not the worst.
Was he frolicking?
Well, I pulled up next to her, hey, and he just goes, hey. Like I, like I'm the weirdo. Yeah, go, hey, you're naked. He goes, well, everybody does it. Never.
Never.
They sure don't, you know? I found out he was 16 and he got, he got me to find his house. God delivered the bomb.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of the night. Stay safe.
You and your boys be safe.
We'll return back to council comments with Councilmember Brian.
I just wanted to say, the mixer as well, a whole team from Vive was there. But in, in particular, Gary Sweet, who's the engineer, who helped design, he did the engineering part, but worked with Councilmember Doig and myself, designed the program. I only got to do a couple of site visits with them, but I know they're in the final stages of the planning. It does look like it's not going to be in time for the first event, but by the end of summer, it'll be up and running. They were talking about temporary solutions to supply internet to our events, though they could, they have it everywhere. They can bring something in to do that. All really positive and it's exciting to see it come to full fruition. Thank you, Blake, for helping with this.
Any questions? All right, we'll move over to Councilmember Claire.
I do have kind of a question. I'm not sure if it's for you or for everyone, but I, I do think that we do want to get the URL for the landing page that will eventually be showing up so that we can get QR codes created and passed around to all the businesses and everything else. So if we do go live, everyone will, one will show up at the place. Here's how you log on. And then if I can follow up on that, on that line, I've been working in the chamber last two weeks. One of the things that I'm helping with is coming up with an analysis of all the restaurants, all the places where a visitor, tourist can get food, stores, lounge, quick stops and restaurants and looking at the hours. And I shared with the mayor, the city manager, the PDF that shows that. And going along with that, Cynthia Henderson, who works with the chamber, is creating a webpage that'll have each of the different. And going along with that, Cynthia Henderson, who works with the Chamber, is creating a webpage that'll have each of the different restaurants on it, and the times, and menus, and everything else for that saving place. One thing that I'm trying to build on that is that I've identified a company that makes community or city apps. And what these would be is, and a lot of different chambers, and if I'm bringing it up as a chamber, but I'm looking at it in a library sense, that you come in, you go to a rural landing page, you download an app, either iPhone or Android, and it would be able to, what, tell you all the different restaurants, hopefully all restaurants are open at that moment, all the different lodging, different events that are coming up and all of that. And I reached out to the company for just Dunsmere to do it by ourselves. It'd be prohibitive, it'd be about $5,000, no, I'm sorry, $3,000 a year, which comes out to about 166. But what I'd like to propose and I'd like to pursue is working with the key business company, Siskiyou, to come up with a plan whereby, since they're covering the lodging aspect of it, they would cover half of the costs and also cover for the entire county. So I looked at it and I identified that for the 45,000 population of Siskiyou County, we could get the system for all the cities to $5,000 a year. When you divide it in half, the amount that we at Dunsmere are iterating, you pay based on population, would be like $31,000 a month. So the whole idea is if we look at it from a county-wide standpoint, and then break down half of it going to lodging and the rest of it coming from the cities or the chambers or whatever, I think it would be really popular for all of the cities, particularly, not why we do this, they don't have a lot of tourists apparently.
They're getting there. They're trying.
That's one of the things I want to keep pursuing, and I'm trying to figure out how best to work it up at the EDC and make that happen. So if you got any suggestions, that's one of the things I'm working on right now. The other thing is just to point out that tomorrow in Reading is the Sacramento Valley Division membership meeting. And the interesting thing from our standpoint is I was able to get Jamie Tarn, who is the president of the Siskiyou County Forest Fire Safety Council. She's going to be giving the presentation along with Giselle Nova, who helped get us to the floor that came in here. And they'll be giving a half-hour presentation on fire hardening and all of that. So we'll have a little starring role in that sense next, so if you want us to have, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaisler.
Bring some of that back, that information. Okay, I got some good news, people. As the city manager was talking, one of the lead contractors is Envirocon. Envirocon.com is hiring. They're looking for people they want to hire locally. The jobs are like lining trucks, truck beds for where they dump the dirt in, you're lining them with plastic, you're lining railroad cars with plastic. And some of the jobs entails standing out in the river, holding the plastic barrier while they do some work. Seems kind of cool, summertime, water's cool, cool job. Just put it out there for people that if you wanted to find a job, there is a chance to work locally down here on this railroad project. Envirocon.com, the person I talked to, his name's Wiz. He said, go online, do your application, they're screening now. So there's some information. This Saturday, I believe, the 20th, at City Park, is Family Day. There's a barbecue in the park, it's put on by the Resource Center, sponsored by the Rotary.
I thought that was the second.
Huh?
Thought that was the first one is June.
Thought it was Saturday, the 20th. Am I wrong? Okay, maybe I'm wrong. Anyway, we got a Family Day coming out, I'm not sure of the date, I thought it was the 20th. But another thing that I want to give a big shout out, I'm not going to name names, I'm just going to say to everybody that's involved in fixing up our ballpark for the softball tournament. Walked by there the other day, I'll be doing some painting there Saturday, but it's looking really good. I'm impressed, looking forward to the softball tournament at Railroad Days. And that's about all I got. Going to be a good summer.
It's, it's.
Also, we'll point out, congratulations to somebody sitting in the audience who just got a big promotion. He's at the bottom, right?
Oh, yeah. The boss.
Dave, we just looked it up, it's, the Family Day is Friday, June 2nd, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM.
Thank you.
And then.
Oh, yeah, Citywide Yard Sale, that's 26th, right?
What is that?
Citywide Yard Sale's the 26th.
26th.
Thank you. All right, I will be very brief, just want to put it out there to everybody to contact the City Hall. If you want to be on the Snow Removal Committee, we are looking for members of the public to sit on that. And we're looking for residents from North Dunsmere, South Dunsmere, and those from businesses. So just a reminder that those aren't due to City Hall if you're interested. I attended the Caltrans open house for the myriad of projects that are going on for the next couple of years and heard that there was a really good turnout at the beginning of the event, and people trickled in pretty consistently throughout the event, once I had gotten there as well. And that's all I have for right now. Thank you. We'll move into item number six, which is committee reports. We do have a Mossbury Falls committee report, and are there any others for tonight as well?
No, but Mossbury Falls, wait.
Finance Committee met, but it'll mostly be discussed in other topics.
Okay. So Matthew, myself, Dustin met with Union Pacific on the Mossbury Falls project and actually got good news. We actually got the trail concept approved by Union Pacific, and it was not communicated back to us for some reason last year. So we're basically moving forward with discussions on the environmental, as well as final engineering and design and working with Union Pacific on that discussion. I don't know if there's anything else that UP would like to add, because I just have early.
Yeah, so since that, so since that conversation, I have met and discussed with UP on two, two different avenues and two different approaches to try and help push the Mossbury Falls component forward. And, and there is, you know, definite interest from a safety standpoint to helping us make it happen. And I was told today that this is the only project in the United States that will be on Union Pacific Railway that's a trail. So.
Booyah!
So would you take an opportunity to address the word that's out there about money being pulled back and support being removed? And you shared with me that you think that will be changed around, so there's no real concern right now about not having the funding to go forward?
No, I, I think we can, I think we could absolutely have the support we need. Actually, we're just discussing how we can put in a donation box up there at the, at Hedge Creek area to try and take in some donations. And, and honestly, I thought about just putting in a parking kiosk and see how many people paid us just to park there. So it's, we're definitely thinking about it at a staff level, so we're, you know, anything we could do.
Is there, is there any idea on a proposed prospective date for completion?
The final engineering, so they approved the concept, the location, the walls. You did send out the operations and maintenance agreement for review again, to go over that with everybody. And so right now, our next option is basically working with Union Pacific on whether we're going to have their engineers do the design or a basis city do the final design, and then finding funding for that. We have to meet with funders next, but we wanted to reestablish the connection and get the concept approved. And like I said, we found out that basically the concept wasn't through, so we can kind of report a couple of other things.
We, I did have, unless you wanted to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay. In my conversation today, there, we are scheduling a high rail. So we will be meeting next month to kind of determine who needs to go. And the challenge we have right now is the water's so high, and a lot of it's potentially underwater. So we want to, we just want to make sure that's safe. So it'd probably be a late July or August trip out there. And so we'll, we have to prioritize, because we only have a certain number of seats on what that looks like. So it may only be the engineer, myself, and Union Pacific, but we'll see what that makeup looks like. We'll have a meeting to discuss how many people that we can get, get on the high rails to make sure we make it up there safely, so.
Yeah, so the next, the, the next steps are basically solidifying that and then working on funding for the planning, engineering, and then getting that scheduled, and then talking to the county about the environmental adoption. We may do that a little bit sooner than the final engineering, because again, the location, it's pretty much solidified for what that is.
I just wanted to add some, some perspective, since I'm new on this committee and task. I didn't realize just how much it was just the concept. Granted, there's a lot of detail in there that'll help with the engineering. But when we say finish the final engineering, we really mean start, start the final engineering. Like, there's no engineered plans, there's just, you know, everything taken into account for the location. So that we have to pay for, or find some funding to support, but it's still really positive.
No, there's a, um, and I can't think of, Hestons, Tom Hestons. He, he has.
The concept plan.
Yeah, the trail's already conceived and.
Yeah, he did the concept work. Actually, Union Pacific needs actual engineered plans before they get next level, next level.
From a structural engineer standpoint.
Yeah.
I've been working on this my entire political career, so I'm proud that we're finally moving forward. I give a big hand to everybody involved, right on, because it's like, this is going to be one of the biggest things for Dunsmere, is people being able to safely go to the railroad track and not worry about getting arrested or breaking the law or getting hit by a train. I'm, I'm very happy and excited.
We need to put up a silence, so Mossbury Falls with an arrow.
Everybody else is, all right, great. Any other committee reports?
Um, Finance Committee did meet, I'm not going to go into the detail, just because we will be going into that detail under both items in all business, and that's exclusively what we talked about, the Public Works Building and the Budget Review. The one thing I will mention is that before our next city council, we will be meeting again for the Hopeful Burn Project.
Did you guys give an update on the community promotions funding? I know that was brought up last time in terms of what is our schedule, like, or not?
We kind of touched the subject, but we haven't gotten a specific deadline or timeline on when, how, who, where.
We talked about doing that. My hope is for, if not the meeting, the First Plan Committee meeting after we finish the budget, the, the, so we'll vote. To do what I vote for.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into Google of the Minutes. So tonight, we have the Minutes from May 4, 2023. Is there any discussion?
I move, we approve the Minutes.
Our second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Brian, second by Councilmember Kaisler. We have a discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We'll move into item number eight, which is the consent agenda. We have one item tonight, which is the check register for April 29th through May 12th, 2023. Any discussion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
One second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Kaisler, second by Councilmember Clarnow. No other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We have no public hearing tonight, so we'll move ourselves into our old business with item 10A, the Public Works Building update.
All right, so we, we will officially be 100% out tomorrow. I think we have two pallets of hazardous materials left down there, and then we are out. It, it is becoming a very active place down there, and it's, it's not really that safe. Did, I did a walk-through today with Union Pacific and, you know, kind of where they're at, got a, just kind of a, most of the contractors were out today because they're doing all the high-voltage power line moving. And so pretty much everybody's out there, Union Pacific has moved out. And they'll, they're starting all the demolition-type activities and review of those structures and everything beginning next week. So we will be out and officially. On the council tonight, I have, I have the request to purchase four 20-foot Conex containers to assist in the, the temporary transition for, for Rotary and for Parks and Rec to be out of their locations, so then, you know, hopefully we can start going through that process. So I do have a request for a motion there. On a side note, I did meet with N-Plan onsite, and it looks like we may be able to either do it in a ministerial or a CADX. And so we should be good to, good to go on the environmental component. Just would have to have some mitigated, related to the, you know, bird survey and make sure that when we cut the trees, there's no baby birds, so.
Is there a staff report with the total amount that you're requesting in the motion?
Yes, it is on page eight.
Twenty-five thousand.
Eight.
Page eight, thank you.
These Conexes planning to be, or the?
So, yes, so, so as a part of the Conex thought process, as we move towards, you know, once we move back into the building, we'll reevaluate all of our total Conexes. I mean, the value of them typically doesn't go down much, so I would expect that we'd be able to, if we chose to resell some of them, I don't see that as being a problem. It's kind of just a, let's do this temporarily, make sure we have a place that's secure and to store stuff. And then at the end, we would make some decisions on what to liquidate. So I'm just requesting now for, requesting up to 25,000 to, to purchase four Conexes. I don't believe it'll cost that much, but, you know, depends on shipping and if that cost has gone up.
Is this a this-year budget item, or is this reflected in the budget we're looking at?
This is this-year budget item, like, hopefully to have them delivered next week.
And then, Councilmember Clarnow, would you like to provide a background on the discussion of that Finance Committee line?
So for the most part, we're going into the preliminary costs and financing options. We discussed, there really hasn't been too much movement on that, since what was discussed at the last city council meeting. We're still looking at the lease purchase over the.
Certificate of participation.
Are there any other questions before we move into public comment?
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. If anyone would like to make a three-minute comment, they may approach the podium or raise their hand in the audience. Seeing none, we'll close public comment on the item and move into discussion. Is there any discussion on the item at hand, which there is a requested motion on page eight to support a budget adjustment in the purchase of the Conex containers?
I move to authorize the city manager to purchase four 20-foot storage containers for a amount not to exceed $25,000.
Is there a second?
One second.
So a motion by Councilmember Deutsch, second by Councilmember Clarnow, we'll move into a roll call vote. Is there any discussion before the vote?
Madam Mayor, I think maybe I should recuse myself on this vote. Most of the stuff that I'm with Rotary and I deal with, I don't think it'd be fair for me to vote on this, because I'm in Rotary and we need that box. So I'm going to recuse myself. I think that's just fair.
Okay, you can enter in a vote of abstention if you'd like.
I will, I'm just telling you before I do it.
Thank you, I appreciate that for the record. So we'll move into a roll call vote, is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Councilmember Kaisler.
Abstain.
Councilmember Deutsch.
I don't see a conflict for myself, so I vote yes.
All right, Councilmember Clarnow.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
And myself as an aye.
Cool.
Carries, thank you. Is there any other discussion on item 10A before we move into item 10B?
I, I don't have anything currently.
Great, thank you. We'll now move into item 10B, which is the Budget Review, and this is a continuation item from the special presentation at our last meeting, and I'll hand it over to our members.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. So nothing major to report in terms of dollar, you know, figures within the budget. So kind of this is mainly to allow for more public input, have it in the agenda packet. Also, allow Councilmember Brian to give his wonderful comments about the, the budget and other financial-related items, as he will be most likely gone for the adoption of the budget. So we have, in the budget packet, you will see that I have flipped the columns, so I'm just trying to throw you guys off all over the place. In the previous one, I just was able to print it and put it in the packet. But in this one, the, the last two columns, it reads like, you know, we normally read from left to right. So the next year's budget, 2324, is in the second-to-last column. And then the last column is the 2425 budget. So just read it like normal. So coming from left to right, you have your specific account numbers, going into the prior year actual, going into current year original budget, current year amended, current year actual, and now this is through May. And now this is through May, well, through May twelfth or whatever it was. And then, of course, next year's budget and then the following year budget. So just wanted to point those out for you all as we read, as you go through the document. So there were a few, uh, finance committee inputs that, um, did change in this document uh, since the last time. Um, nothing major. We did look at a few of the revenues, um, kind of some cannabis revenues, things like that. We did do a few, um, uh, uh, other revenue, revenue, um, items. I don't have anything else in that sense. And so to move forward, just for everybody's benefit, we are, so Dust and I have been talking intensely in in discussions in verbal format on the narrative. So now we will be placing that into a paper format, get it onto the document to create the, um, as hopefully some citizens have said, a beautiful looking budget document.
Yes, I remember, um, a couple of years ago, didn't we have one where all the descriptions, that you're talking about, any descriptions?
Yes. Yeah, so I I do have that kind of squared away. Once the, once the kind of the worksheets that you see here, which is just bare numbers, then I take that and I copy and paste into, um, the the word documents with the narrative and all those pieces. And of course, Dustin's beautiful words of some kind of cool narrative, plus working on, um, visioning and the and, you know, the vision statement is in there as well, uh, which is nice. Um, so just a very short few pieces on the narrative. It's it's, you know, mainly surrounding our public works, building, equipment needs and things like that. So we're trying to get kind of focus on some infrastructure pieces that, um, that that are necessary.
Number Claire, do you want to give any background from finance before we go to questions?
Um, yeah, there's just, um, two major points I kind of want to bring up when we're looking at the budget, um, or when anyone's reviewing it in between this this copy, um, between when anyone looks at it now and when it comes back at the next meeting. Um, and that's under on page number seventeen. Um, in the last column under Department six oh five, it's a hundred and forty three thousand dollars under twenty four, twenty five. That number right there is actually there as a reference number and it actually, it's a variable number that deals with the community promotions. Um, and it actually will be going into the twenty three, twenty four line, um, which really affects the final amount of deficit for the general fund for that twenty four, twenty five. Um, and it's really inflating that number, but it's not going to be there from the final budget. Um, the other thing I'd like to point out is just, um, that deficit right now in this draft version is very much being driven by a lot of big projects such as the Public Works Building. Um, and once that number's moved over, it becomes less of a trend and more of an anomaly because of those large projects.
Other Councilmember Bryan?
Just on those particular items before we move on, uh, to clarify more, that one forty three, uh, five, two, two, under two thousand twenty or twenty four, um, that's actually the amount that was requested this year, the community promotions funding. Um, my correct play?
Correct, yes.
So it's not accurately represented there. So currently in this budget, with that two hundred and fourteen thousand dollar deficit, there's only allocating enough money in community promotions to do the downtown wifi. So that's what zero. Finance Committee did pass a number of resolutions to forward to council on this budget, one of which was to allocate, you know, it'll obviously raise our our deficit, but, um, allocate a cap of eight hundred, or sorry, eighty eight thousand dollars in community promotion total. And we had a lively discussion about how to improve the community promotion, um, process. And we think it might be wise to move to an allocate then, um, afterwards with that allocation already set in the budget. So we're not considering the individual projects with the budget. We do it in mind of the budget. Then after that, maybe we move for a fall approval and a January start time. We're not trying to, you know, destabilize any organizations that rely on it this year, but we think we're all pretty much in favor of revisiting that if council is up until the end of this.
Are there any questions?
Well, uh, I'm just wondering, is the budget, where do we keep an eye out for what's happening with the new, uh, public works building?
Right, that's that's a great question. So right there on page seventeen, if you go like three lines up, it says eighty two fifty point zero one, um, on page seventeen, it's, uh, it says construct new public workshop. And so right now that hundred thousand is, that's kind of a placeholder. Um, and then, uh, you know, there's fifty thousand the following year. So some of that may be like equipment or something like that, but ultimately that's where that will be. And so the construction of it, we haven't placed in there yet because we don't have a solid number, but that that would be what we would also borrow. So there'd be, there would be a revenue associated with that. And so that that would be how that would tie together. So we're going to put that number in there and then, uh, and kind of get that more narrow and then we will.
That's why I have an area to do a poll.
Right, and then, uh, you know, the one thing I wanted to point out, so the line right above that eight eighty two eleven shows ninety six thousand. Um, so because the timing of the library, um, we're, um, work doing on the library, so fifty five thousand of that ninety six thousand there in capital outlays is directly associated with that building.
Would that be the roof?
That, yes, the roof and.
Finally.
That stuff. And so that's in that number. And then there, so part of our narrative, some of that'll have, um, we want to look at doing some some minor improvements here in the council chambers, some safety improvements in City Hall. Um, and then, um, it's just, you know, we we just have some capital expenses to be made um, on our facilities and we just want to try to upkeep that as best we can.
And Finance Committee voted on a ten thousand dollar allocation that wasn't originally in the budget or recommendation, um, to go towards that sort of master planning work, to have money for inspections for assessing the buildings.
That was ten thousand?
Ten thousand. That's not a lot, but enough to start the project.
You also said that we capped the promotions at eighty eight?
Well, the Finance Committee is recommending it. It's not in this staff.
But that's what you're recommending is eighty eight?
That was what Finance Committee unanimously agreed upon.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's viewed as the highest amount. I mean, we can't afford a lot with this sort of deficit. It was viewed as the amount that everyone could take haircuts with us and see what it looks like at the the end of that.
So with the deficit setting, what, where are we looking with reserves and our reserves policy?
We're looking good this year, but I could have Blake elaborate on that. Finance Committee was happy to hear we had a lot of cash on hand, rest is second, not enough to sustain more than one year of that, though.
Yeah.
Would that be what we do that?
Yeah, because right now with that, it's a significant portion. And like I said, um, right now, the way this is, the next two years are laid out, it doesn't necessarily look like a trend, but if greater economic forces inspire against us, um, we don't want to be caught spending a whole bunch of money, well, having to be in a huge deficit next year and the year after, good outside forces. Which is why we're.
One of the, yeah, one of the common subjects that we talked about was the revenues and the TOTs and stuff like that. And and so if you look on the, at the very beginning on page ten of of the packet, then we have, you know, transient occupancy tax. And so we're, we have a very conservative budget, you know, but we've already taken in through now two hundred and forty five thousand. And that's without Cave Springs being online for, um, approximately six months or so. And so they are going to do a shortened season this year. So we will see, we'll see some revenue, um, before they do the rest of their transition. But, uh, you know, so we're, we're coming in over budget. Um, so we we're just, but we follow a ten year trend line and we've had a couple of outliers. So that's what we do have a good balance on hand. And so it's kind of good timing with the building, you know, building a new public works building. We have a little bit of extra cash to be able to, you know, put towards capital assets and that are much needed.
Although, to be clear, this this budget only allocates a hundred thousand, so we could reduce for public works. And that's kind of soft cost leading up to it, not even the cost, which will be financed and figured out subsequently.
Right.
Well, the majority of it was the finance.
Yeah, I mean, so this hundred thousand is not going to go back into that. It'll it'll just be spent. But, um, so, I mean, if you want to take that out, it's easy enough to see we're still at two hundred and, or a hundred and fourteen, which is closer to the sort of deficit budgets this council has passed in prior years. Where the difference between us being conservative on revenues, um, realistic on expenses ends up being, you know, better than we predicted often. Um, there's one more official, um, recommendation from Finance Committee. Uh, if I could recommend everyone to, uh, fund four twenty. The five thousand that was allocated there was deemed too low now that we have two businesses contributing to the tax. And this year we're already at eighty two hundred. So Finance Committee voted to make it for ten, ten thousand this year and twelve thousand at some point. We got that with Mark.
Realistic.
Any other questions? Go away with a public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, seeing none, we'll open up this item for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, you can come up to the podium. They'll have three minutes.
Still Peter Art, still the same address. I think I got away with that last time. Um, I'm simply reflecting on the four years I spent on the council and the extraordinarily hard work of former Mayor Matthew Bryan in creating the Finance Committee, in creating the charter for the Finance Committee, in for the first time, going from just bare numbers, which put everybody to sleep and are uninformative, to policy, priorities, budget, it all fits together. So my diligent search, all I could find was, I found nothing online, but now I see numbers in the packet. But to be sort of dismissive of just filling in the verbiage, um, that will be a major disappointment if that's all the Finance Committee and the City Council does. For instance, goals fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three, page five of the current budget, bullet number one, improve infrastructure, including sidewalks. Will that be followed up on? Bullet two, investigate options for improving law enforcement coverage. Three, continue full time code enforcement, including vigorous work toward compliance with the vacant and distressed building ordinance. Anyway, there are eight of those goals. There is a five page letter from the city manager and staff to the Honorable Mayor and City Council. And in there, there are fifteen goals and objectives for the years twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three. Obviously, the Public Works Building is not one of them. The city park was an object in twenty twenty one, twenty three, but please don't go backwards. The the idea of budgeting by the latest crisis and the latest unplanned expense, especially short circuiting the needs of the community, I simply hope you don't do that. And for all the work that went into fundamentally moving Dunsmere from a little city to a bigger city, that you don't go backwards. I'll stand by to see what you got.
Thank you. Again, if anyone on Zoom would like to make a comment, you can go to the reactions button and raise your hand. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. There's no requested, um, action tonight. This will come back to us, but I know that Councilmember Bryan, you will not be with us for hopefully the adoption, hopefully the next meeting is what we're intending. Do you want to discuss first?
I might, I guess I'd just, I'd like to bring up a couple of points, but most importantly, I think I will be able to attend the next Finance Committee meeting. I do think it's important, the Finance Committee, be involved, uh, with with the budget, you know, the prior formats. I know we have a lot of new people here with the the Chair of Finance and our City Manager. But, you know, obviously staff is allowed to present when staff would like to. Often we come to an agreement, just so it illuminates council having, you know, just a survey of changes or alterations or info from the Finance Committee is always really helpful. Um, in that, I I always have a great many questions and Blake does his best to put up with me, as does Dustin. Um, thankfully, I have Finance Committee to ask those questions on. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to give you my perspective on it. I think, um, this is a monumental task because we made a two year budget and didn't update it halfway through. So there's a lot, a lot to project. You know, you're trying to be very, very accurate. So I think, uh, you know, what I'm noticing is we don't really have a good sense of that extra year because of the financial situation we may be in right now. But, um, I want to warn everyone that eventually law enforcement is going to creep up as the torpedo that may sink the ship. It won't, we'll find a way, but it hasn't come home to roost yet. It's unfortunate we're in such a bad deficit before that even becomes an issue. So I would just advise us all to, um, you know, be very, very careful. We have good cash reserves, but they'll disappear very quickly if we don't preserve them and spend them effectively.
Are there any other items for discussion from the other Councilmembers? I think, um, my biggest issue, Dust, has just been arising, you know, you try to talk to people as much as possible, it's just staff capacity. We do have an older staff, uh, especially in the public works department. We could potentially have two people retire in the next two years and however we anticipating the the backhoe of those positions. And then, of course, with the, um, for those of you who are not familiar, um, CAR, California Resource Board has just published their new regulations taking place, uh, the first of next year. Um, none of our equipment is compliant and so therefore we will not be able to use any of our equipment as of the first of the year currently. And so that's my concern and, uh, we will only be able to use them in cases of high emergency. Um, and so updates of equipment, I think, are going to also be a big need in the next year for going to be able to maintain stone removal, maintain, um, public works activities.
Those regulations only affect diesel equipment, not gasoline.
So currently, the the equipment that we report on is our off road equipment. So that's our backhoes, our, um, wheel loader and, um, but but those are the primary ones. And I think there's one other one. But we essentially, we have, hmm, I don't know, seven or eight pieces of equipment that are out of compliance? Oh, the motor grader was the other one. Um, and so there, as as you take home, take us home and study the numbers, when you look at equipment and you get into, um, some of the capital expenses, you'll see about five hundred and fifty thousand in the airport. Um, and that is solely for stone removal equipment. Um, so we're gonna, um, I just got emailed today that there's some changes at the FAA with our personnel, so now we can, I can engage them. I'm going to modify our airport CIP. Um, and then, uh, we're pretty aggressive on the equipment in the next two years and I hope to get our primary, primary equipment to where we we are, we're capable to just continue operations as as normal. Um, and, uh, so you'll see, so vehicle replacements and then equipment replacements. And and those those two numbers are, they're pretty high. Um, and but we don't, we're at a point where, so our our cutoff, um, for emergency use is December thirty first of twenty twenty four. And so we're looking to aggressively go after that, um, over the next two fiscal years. Uh, most of that stuff lands in the utilities, but some of it does carry into the general fund. So you'll see, um, a portion of that will be in, uh, buildings and grounds and then, what's the other one? Streets and roads. Um, and so you'll see some of that stuff in there. Um, and as far as the staffing component, I will present a formal staffing plan and and, uh, moving that forward as well. And that I do, I I am asked requesting, uh, two additional personnel, um, in the public works area, um, to help offset for those retirements and and, uh, and then, um, we'll look at some more additional training and aggressively go after, um, the training to help get us to where, um, where we where we need to be. Um, and so that that way, uh, when somebody chooses to retire, then it's not a big hit on the city. And so, uh, um, hopefully all of that pans out, but, uh, yeah, there is, so it does, it does, you know, it does impact the budget, but, uh, it's, you know, I'm landing out there as it's an interim thing from the staffing side. It's just a two year, one to two year period. And then we just won't fill those positions again after that.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to our final item of tonight, which is new business, item eleven A Downtown Revitalization, our P contract.
And Mayor, can I request that we have a five minute recess?
Yeah, we will, uh, recess for five minutes. We will reconvene at seven thirty seven. I was actually thinking about that and I was like, oh, maybe we can push through. We're just. All right, I will pull this back to order at seven forty one PM and move us into item eleven A Downtown Revitalization, request for proposal contract.
All right, Mayor and Council, so, uh, as you know, in January, we, uh, received a. So, uh, as you know, in January, we, uh, received a $250,000 grant to conduct downtown revitalization planning. And, uh, and so we have, uh, went through a RFP process in March, received them by April 14th. We recently just completed a review. Um, we initially had five, um, that were interested and we received four proposals. And so here I have brought forward, um, the unanimous decision amongst the group. So we had, uh, myself, Blake, and then, uh, five, uh, five people from, uh, Siskiyou Economic Development, uh, go through the review process. Um, as a part of that review process, we did, uh, walk through downtown, um, just so we had an understanding of what we were looking at, both on Sacramento Avenue and Dunsmere Avenue. Um, and then, uh, overall, we felt that Cosmont Companies was the, um, best, uh, choice for the, this, uh, for our, uh, our community. And so what I'm, uh, asking, uh, the council to do is, uh, authorize me to, uh, move forward, um, with, uh, this proposal and, uh, could, um, negotiate or basically work through the professional services agreement with myself and city attorney and then, uh, authorize them and then, uh, move forward into the process of, uh, starting, um, starting our downtown revitalization.
All right, we'll move into questions from councilmembers. Are there any questions?
Yes, I did have one.
Okay, well, the councilmember Clairemout and then councilmember Grayson.
So I noticed here that on a lot of these, it was, uh, Garavali, how's that pronounced?
Garavali.
Garavali, yeah.
Garavali, um, ranked fairly close together by almost everyone. Um, and when we're going through this, I'd just like to know, I kind of took these two apart. One picked these two and that one was fairly, fairly close.
Right, so the primary thing that set those two apart was, um, so while Garavali ranked fairly high because of familiarity, what, what really set them apart was that, um, it was led by an architecture firm and their subcontractor was probably a better fit for being the prime than they were. And, uh, you know, so we ultimately felt that we, we needed somebody that had comprehensive experience in developing that full plan, but we didn't feel like the architectural firm.
That would have led to conflict.
That was, that was leading it.
Yeah.
Was, was, was as good of an option. We, I mean, we definitely, we know that they, they've done work here in the community. Um, you know, we're familiar with them. Um, so there was familiarity amongst everybody in the group. But ultimately, when it came down to who's going to best represent, uh, or be able to best, provide the best options for us and, and produce a, a quality product, we felt that Cosmet just outweighed them just a little bit because of, just because, I mean, that's what Cosmont does. They're, they're top of the top for the, for the state and we're actually, we were surprised to actually get them as, as a proposal.
All right, councilmember Doig.
I'm kind of curious, some interesting way that you've noticed, but I remember that when Todd Duhon was still here, he had a company that he was reaching out and started to develop. Is this the same company or did it not?
This, this is not. So, so we had the four companies, so the one that he was speaking with was retail strategies. They were, they were the number three, um, um, of the rankings. Um, and, and really what, what came down to us choosing Cosmet over, you know, and actually even Garavalia over them was they're, you know, they're, they're a nationwide company. And we felt that their familiarity, um, and proximity to our area. Um, it was just, we didn't feel like we were going to get, uh, you know, enough detailed attention and we might be forgotten about, you know. Their, their retail strategies, I mean, their focus is big box stores and that's just not Dunsmere, right? You know, I mean, we're, we're a tiny little town on, on the interstate that, uh, 55,000 cars pass by every day, you know? So the goal is how do we get a percentage of those cars to stop here? And, uh, and we just didn't feel that they had, uh, they had enough familiarity in, in Northern California. While they've done some, put forward some good projects, um, most of those communities were in that 20,000 population range and that just, it doesn't really fit anywhere in Siskiyou County. Um, and, uh, so we just felt that they, they didn't, uh, they, they just weren't quite there on the familiarity. We felt it was just, uh, too like off the shelf, like, well, here's our proposal.
I had an interest in it.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Well, ma'am. I have a just general question. Uh, you know, it seems that we've been discussing, this has been a very long process the last two years and the council kind of lost sight of what exactly we were, um, going for. Cause it's always just, we're hoping to get this for economic development and get more information. Um, I'd, I'd love to kind of have a meeting subsequent to this to go over the deliverables of this grant. Um, so we can kind of start to anticipate that and, um, participate in coming up with this plan, uh, as are the elected officials. But I, I have, um, from my experience in the community, a lot more enthusiasm behind downtown revitalization and kind of community building than less so with straight retail recruitment. Um, how did they rank as far as that revitalization and, uh, community outreach?
Well, and, and that's, that's really kind of what tipped them over was because they've done more of the revitalization efforts than the retail recruitment component. Um, and, and the people that they brought forward to us, um, you know, the primary lead, he's, he's a former city manager, um, has worked his whole career in smaller communities. And, and we just felt that that was a good fit, um, for what we're looking for and would understand our, our uniqueness a little bit differently, uh, from a different perspective. And, uh, so, um, overall, I mean, you know, it's, it's how do we find the investors? How do we get them to come in and, and, and put the cash here, right? And that's really what the, that's really what kind of, after we did our walk through downtown and I kind of, myself and Blake are like explaining, you know, showing the buildings and the ones that we really need investor support for. Um, and the fact that we don't have a lot of retail spaces that are just rental-ready right now. Um, and that's, so we felt Cosmont had a better, would have a better network, um, within California to help maybe support that effort. Um, a little less of the retail component, but more, you know, they're still going to do the retail component, which is part of our CDBG requirements. But really the focus is, it's, to me, it's getting the investors, right? And I think that's a, I think that was a big.
So was it coming up with, well, I thought one of the deliverables was coming up with like a plan that we could use to get grants to the finance.
Yes.
Yeah, you walked through the scope on page.
I don't remember what page it was.
I was just looking at it.
Yeah, no, I did, I did read it. So I was, I was just interested. Um, and then on a cost basis, do we, do, do they have a good sense of how long this will take? And/or is it just a continuous relationship till the money runs out as far as, because recruitment, you know, support could just be indefinite.
Right, so we have, yeah, so we could, we could hire them on even after the grant. So the grant cycle, I think, runs out in 2025, right? Yeah, so, so this was the full grant cycle, like they're, so when they throw the budget in there, you know, there's, it's like, they project, you know, like year one to be the development of the plan. And then the remaining time of the budget would be, or the budget and the grant would be for them to focus on the recruitment aspect of it.
Okay.
What would be our connecting point, both as a council and as a community, or what would be a team assembled, a committee?
Right, so, so, so my intention is to handle it similar to how we handle, uh, handled the active transportation plan, where we, we ask, uh, ask stakeholders, you know, in the downtown area, both, uh, building owners and business owners and people who rent in spaces and a kind of a, you know, and then other community members to try and get some of that input that we're looking for and as well as, um, the council's input as well, what, what you guys want to see. And I think that's, that's a good makeup and a good mix. And I think if we're able to get all of that input, um, we've had a lot of good input in the active transportation planner. And, uh, you know, I would expect we'd see the same kind of act, activities, uh, related, um, for this plan as well.
Yeah, this survey, the active transportation is being managed by Civicwell and they went through the process of getting the consultant in going through for the plan generation. As far as the advisory committee, I'm the council member who's kind of the point on the advisory committee for us. And mainly the advisory committee, the main purpose of that is we're not making any decisions. We're mainly just informing the consultants about how are we getting the word out to people, um, double checking our advertisements, making sure like, again, putting it on the agenda a couple of meetings ago, making sure everybody knows what's going on. So the role of that advisory committee is to give more context than in, in terms of like leading the project itself. Um, cause the idea is that the public input would be, you know, what they get from the visioning workshop, what they're leaning out of the site tour and, and meeting with certain people, community that would be part of this. Um, so that's kind of how the ATP group has been kind of operating with that advisory committee. Is that we, we don't really weigh in on anything besides like how are we getting the word out and kind of more of a structure of outreach.
In the end, we will have the final say on it, though, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah, you will, yeah. Actually, um, at this point, we're in the big, um, for that really quick, is we're in the big, um, community input section. And as you'll remember, this whole summer is going to be about community input. And then by fall, they'll bring the first draft back for public input from the Franch Commission, city council and in general.
Cool.
So theoretically, you know, that's a very traditional planning timeline for some of these types of area-focused plans is to come in, just have the advisory group kind of give you the context of the community. And then as they do the analyses, um, they would come back at strategic points of the, the draft or input on that from the community council and planning.
So I, another quick question, was it discussed, um, the aspect that this company is also the consultant for the landing in Mount Shasta? They obviously think it's a plus, um, but I'm not so sure our community would feel that way. Was that discussed by your group?
It, it was, it was brought up as, you know, I mean, from a familiarity standpoint, um, based on where that project is relatively to where, what we're dealing with. I think it's, you know, that's, that's pretty much brownfield redevelopment, no infrastructure. So that's a big animal compared to, I think, a downtown revitalization. So I think those two are, they're similar but different. Um, and so I think that's a, um, you know, it, it didn't play a lot in that. It helped on the familiarity part because they're, they're familiar, they've been up here, they've done some work up here. Um, but, uh, I think the, the two, uh, the two pages that, you know, I'd like to, or the three pages. So if you look at page 35 of the packet, one of the things that really impacted our decision was their familiarity with all of the public financing aspects, um, and how we could help drive back economic development. And then if you look at the following page, the number of boards they've received in the state. Um, so on page, page three of their proposal, page 36 of the packet, um, they, you know, they're, they've been, uh, identified as, as a clear leader, um, and that, and then also, you know, when you look at the next page, page four, it's kind of, every time you look at it, you see a new little nugget. I mean, they talk about all these different components of, you know, what, what, how the evolution of retail has happened and where it's at today and, and what, how even making recommendations for zoning changes and, and amendments like that to, to help us encourage more investment and more, more activities in our downtown. So I think tho, tho, that page, I, I think I've read it six times and I see something new every time. And it's, it really has, uh, I think they kind of put them.
You should tell them that Brookings is not the nearby town up the, up the road.
All right, any questions before public comment? Seena, we're going to public comment. If anyone likes to make a public comment on Zoom, we don't really have anybody here in person anymore, so.
If Leon Gray would like to say something, she's been.
All right, Seena will close public comment and move into discussion. Is there any other discussion on this item?
What's our, uh?
Already make a motion.
I was gonna ask.
I motion to authorize the city attorney to review the agreement and for the city manager to negotiate and enter to, and enter into agreement with Cosmont Companies for the downtown revitalization CDBG grant in the amount not to exceed $200,000.
So there's a motion on the floor.
It's fine, hi.
You can discuss after a second.
Yeah, I was going to ask, um, we noticed they have the opposite organ. No, they're primarily west coast.
Is there a second, there's a second motion by councilmember Chrysler and then by councilmember Doig. Is there any other discussion on the item at the end of the year? Um, the only other thing is I think after you guys have a kickoff, I think it's, I, I think having some more information from my office schedule, uh, and, and from the world, that's why I goes, uh, I talked to councilmember Bryan first. I agree that this has been a very long process for us as a council. We want to make sure that when we're doing this, we're doing this right. And I think that's the concern, um, and how we as councilmembers can be effective in terms of making sure that this is a product that's going to work for the community. I think that's always a concern when you get, uh, some of these larger contractors who, uh, you know, again, were 24-ish, uh, not 24,000. And so it should be 24,000 small to a lot of these consultants. So we just want to make sure we're getting the product that we want.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Otherwise we'll call, listen to a vote, a vote, or call, vote on this one. Councilmember Doig.
Aye.
Councilmember Chrysler.
Aye.
Councilmember Clairemout.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan.
Aye.
And myself and I, motion passed, thank you. Well, now we've been to item number 12, which is future agenda items. I believe for the next meeting, we have the budget item, snow removal committee.
I don't have enough applicants yet. I'm still looking for one, so I'm still looking for one for the sewer ad hoc committee. I've not received any applicants for that. And I, I did receive one, um, applicant in the downtown, but I have not received enough to bring forward a committee.
Okay, so I think, uh, councilmembers, it's kind of the who's left to get people interested in some of these positions. So I was trying to get the word out to make sure that we get enough people. Um, everybody wants to complain about snow removal, but they don't want to sit on a committee to improve it, um, which I find very ironic all the time. Um, but outside of those two items, are there other items that staff is aware of that will be on the next agenda besides the budget and potentially the, this public member?
Um, California Fish and Wildlife Liaison, Anna Burkholder, um, will be here. And then, uh.
Is that checks and stuff on this project?
Yes, and so hopefully, uh, hopefully we'll have something for union negotiations and also, uh, probably won't see it this next agenda, but the agenda after, uh, community promotions.
Um, I'd like to pencil in a presentation by Stephen Bryan on the Palmer Market.
Okay.
He told me that by next meeting, he would have a firm idea of all that stoning. And just in general, what was basically happening around the county since they stepped forward is that they're moving in the direction of hiring somebody that would be managing the Palmer Markets for not all, a number of the cities. So that doesn't mean each city has to go out and find their own and make all the connections. So they're managing that and they're doing a great job. And he wants to, I'd like to pencil him in to do a presentation.
Okay.
And then, uh, councilmember Bryan, you can add up.
There was more to go back to the prior item. I, I meant to ask a question, um, what's going on with the other 50,000 in the grant?
That administrative expenses.
Does that go to SEDC or city?
It stays for us.
So it can be used against, uh, your time, other staff members' time?
Correct.
Thank you.
And we, we do on our pay sheets, we do allocate time towards that, so.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
All right, any other future agenda items that we need to take a look at scheduling? Right, Seena, you can always email us if something comes up. Uh, other than that, uh, we'll move into adjournment. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstention, here and there, thank you everyone.